Yeah. Well, we had our seven week old grandson.
Did you drive that or did you fly?
That was always, that was kind of fun. So my wife really wanted to deal with it.
From my perspective, Ohio ran forever. I don't know, it's just...
Jeff, we're sounding pretty good back there.
That's it. Good little white uncle.
Jerry, how are you?
How you doing? Did you do the Capitol tour?
Can you pace yourself where you don't have to lose the rest of your time?
Well, me, it's like, that's how much.
You just missed the caps. You just stepped your cup.
You know, you needed to high end the whole explosion if you want to do it that way.
We don't even know.
Oh, I know.
Surprise again.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the DeKalb City Council, June 25, 2018. Before we ask Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott to call our role tonight, I'd ask and remind folks, if you'd like to speak to an item on the agenda tonight, and there is only one item, and that is the city manager role and authority, I'd ask you to kindly fill out a speaker request form. They're found in the back of the room. I'll give it to Ruth Scott, and we'll see that we get you on. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanoukian?
Here.
Markmart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Verbic?
Here.
Faber?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Seven present.
There are no items on the regular agenda that are on this agenda, so we'll move to Item C, public participation. If someone would like to speak to any item not listed on the agenda, I'd ask you to come to the podium, and we have no speaker request forms.
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to our major consideration, and that is city manager role and authority discussion. I'm going to ask our city attorney, Dean Frieders, who we put the work big time on this item, to make a few comments. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. We tried to prepare a detailed memorandum for the council that outlines the background on this. It's important to start by distinguishing, the city adopted the managerial form of government, which is a specific form of government under the Illinois Municipal Code that has some significance with regard to the respective role of the council and city manager. There are some communities that hire someone and say, "You are our manager," or "You are our administrator," but simply giving someone that designation doesn't have the same impact as adopting this form of government. When this form of government is adopted, by statute, the power of the council is intended to be, what the Illinois Municipal Code indicates, is quote, "purely legislative," although the council has the authority to approve of all expenses and liabilities of the city. The manager is responsible to serve as the administrative head of the municipal government and responsible for the efficient administration of all of the city's departments. They're intended to be appointed without regard to their political beliefs. Under the municipal code, they're not required to be a resident. They are appointed for an indefinite term, and they may or may not have an employment agreement. The manager may be removed by a majority vote of the council at any time. Under the municipal code, the responsibilities of the manager include enforcement of laws and ordinances in the city, appointment and removal of all department directors, exercising control over all departments and divisions that may be created by the council, appointment and removal of certain unelected officers that broadly refers to city employees, preparation of a report of estimated funds necessary to meet the city's fiscal year expenditures, attending all city council meetings with the right to participate in discussion but no right to vote, recommending the council measures deemed necessary or expedient, and performing other duties as required by law or specified by the city council. The city council has the authority to, as the statute indicates, amplify the powers and duties of the manager to define the scope of each department and each division they're under, to define and prescribe the powers and duties of appointive officers and employees, to fix salaries, to provide for independent audits, to assign appointive officers and employees to perform within one or more departments, to make rules and regulations as may be necessary or proper for the efficient and economical conduct of the business of the city. The statute has been given interpretation to give the council some leeway in defining roles and responsibilities of municipal employees. For example, there's a case from the 1960s where the city council said, "We want our police officers to also be firefighters and perform both sets of duties," and the court said, "You absolutely, as the council, have the ability to do that." There are also some cases, though, that discuss the managerial form of government, as the council has discussed before. When you have something that's established as a form of government, even though it may not have a express home rule preemption, the way the courts have interpreted that is that you can't make a change in the form of government without a referendum. And that interpretation is based on the provisions of the Illinois Constitution. So where municipalities have taken actions to try and pass an ordinance that truly pulls away one of the fundamental powers that's assigned to someone under a form of government, the courts have held that that's an unlawful encroachment upon the authority of whomever you're trying to take power from. So we outlined in the memo both a Illinois Supreme Court case and an Illinois Attorney General opinion where they reviewed cases where a municipality took action, where a city council took action, to take a power that either belonged to the city manager or to the mayor by statute and pull that power back to the council themselves. And the court and the attorney general said that those were unlawful. The Attorney General opinion, though, in particular, does have some very important language about the power that the council does retain. And so, for example, they say, "The cases support the general proposition that the city council has the power to create, abolish, change the qualifications for, alter the duties of various city boards and commissions. However, you can't transfer to the city council without referendum approval and a derogation of the authority of the mayor and city manager, the power to, for example, appoint officers or employees." So we started with a discussion of a number of areas where statute specifically says this is intended to be a power of the city manager. And those are things that the council could not take away from the city manager except after going through a referendum. However, there are two incredibly important points that kind of undermine that entire discussion. The first of those two important points is that whomever the city council hires as the city manager is fundamentally an employee of the city council and works for the city council. They're intended to be an administrator. The council establishes legislative policy, and that administrator follows the legislative policy. So the council retains the ability to direct that employee, to set policy for that employee, and at the end of the day, if the employee isn't performing to the council's directives, the council has the ability to remove that employee. The second fundamental power that the city council has is the power of the purse. The council has the absolute authority to establish the city's budget or to restrict it, or to specify the purposes for which funds can be expended. So, for example, while it would be challenging to come up with a way that the council could say, "We want to ourselves directly hire each employee that the city hires," it'd be very easy to say, "We're going to establish a budget that has a limitation on the number of full-time employees or the number of positions, and if we're going to have a change in that, that requires council approval." The reason I end with that fundamental point about the broad expansive powers of the council with regard to the city's finances and with regard to your operational oversight over the city manager is because what I would encourage you to do is consider those areas where you have concerns about the fashion in which the city operates, or the role or responsibility of the city manager. And if you identify those, we can look at those and identify the best means of addressing whatever your concerns are, or curtailing areas where you believe the power is too expansive. That may be through a direct policy action, or a change in a current city code or ordinance, or it may be through looking at ways that the budget or the city council's financial power could be used to narrow the scope of options that would be available to a prospective city manager, or to provide more effective policy guidance and direction. So with that oversight, I am happy to address any questions the council may have. We did indicate in the memo the provisions of the current Section 3.08 of the City Code, which outline broadly the powers that this city council has delegated to the city manager in addition to those that are identified by council, or I'm sorry, by the Illinois Municipal Code. And I'm, again, happy to address any questions the council may have, and happy to formulate any policies you may need to effectuate your broader goals of reforming the position.
Thank you, Dean. I realize that council has had various opinions on and some kind of discussion, albeit informal, with folks about the residency of a city manager, the spending limit of a city manager, and the appointment of department heads as it relates to working with the city manager, and whether or not the council can set parameters in those three areas. And if we choose to do that, I would have two questions. And perhaps one of the questions is to our HR department, who is going to work very closely with Gov. HR as we search for a new city manager, and that is, we need to, let me rephrase that, do we need to set some of those parameters, if you will, prior to going out and about and advertising for that city manager? I, Chris, you may want to address that now, or you may want to wait to see what kind of conversation we have on that. But I would initially defer to anybody who would like to make a comment. I know, Mike Alderman-Verbic, you were very vocal on the fact that you felt this council had to take a look at what Dean just outlined for us, what we've had in the past, and how we might want to move forward. We've had a number of, I'm sure, conversations with our own constituencies, the citizens of DeKalb, and hopefully those will play into what we decide we want to do moving forward, because we, in fact, are representing the citizens of DeKalb. So with that, Mike, you want to start? Sure. Alderman-Verbic?
First of all, the detail was perfect. Thank you very much for the backup you provided. And it got specifically to the point that I was trying to make from a standpoint of funding positions. So I completely agree with the way things are stated from a standpoint of policy, and that though I would prefer that council would be able to get a review of our resources available prior to these positions being posted. So in other words, not deciding when to hire, who to hire, or those kinds of things, but do we really have the resources truly available? Yes, we set that forth in the budget, but just a quick review to see, can we really continue supporting a particular position?
Yes, Dean?
If I could jump in for just a second, Mayor. To your three points and to Alderman-Verbic's point, on the issue of residency, the council has the authority to establish any regulations you may wish to have.
It's clear beyond a shadow of a doubt that this council, in hiring a new city manager during the year 2018, wants that city manager to live in the city of DeKalb. Is there any argument on that? Is there any discussion of that? Okay?
On the issue of spending authority, again, the broad powers of the council with regard to the city's finances, you have the ability to establish any level of spending authority that you feel is appropriate. As we noted in the backup, as you go through that exercise, we would encourage you to think about if there are different types of expenditures that you have a greater or lesser degree of comfort with, because there are some expenditures that come up that, by their nature, you know, we had major repairs to an ambulance last fiscal year that were several thousand dollars. Expenses of that nature, you may wish to call out into a different class, but that's a policy discussion for the council. You have very broad powers with regard to the, I'm sorry.
Could I interject there? Is there any feeling here, is there a sense that we want to put some kind of a limit? I think the last city manager had a $20,000 spending limit. Do we want to do that prior to reaching out, or is that the kind of thing that we would be discussing with applicants? Dave, and then Pat?
Again, I believe that there's a solution to it. I think the mayor probably has a better control, being that he is directly accountable to the public, and I think some of that responsibility should be switched over to the mayor. While I understand, again, that there's going to be some emergency repairs, I think we can define it better in saying, necessary business operations, the things we need to do day to day, we can give that limit. Anything beyond that, again, like an ambulance repair, that would be an emergency repair, and we can define that, too. And saying something that's out of the normal course of business, that is vital to the continuing operation of the city's operations, I'd personally like to see some of that responsibility over a limit shifted to the mayor with the advice of council, and then to be brought up to council at the next meeting. Again, there's so few things in reality that I believe couldn't go on a consent agenda in a weekly spending report or a bi-weekly spending report, so that council can better track, hey, what are we spending money on? What is the city manager spending this fund on merely to denote it? Again, it doesn't have to be debated, it doesn't have to be necessarily approved beyond the consent agenda, but I'd like to see where the flow of money is going, because in reality, we see the line items. We don't necessarily know what all those expenditures are doing. I'd like it to be more transparent, and for the city manager to have to at least provide those to us to check off. And I think there's a reasonable compromise there that would give the city the ability to pay the expenditures when needed with the mayor's consent, and beyond that, everything should be coming to council. If we'd like to review it, we could keep an eye on it that way. That's at least my thought.
Great, thank you. Alderman-Fagan, I know you've been very involved in, as part of the search team, to look at this. Do you have some comments on that?
Yeah. I agree with you, and that's what I was going to bring up, about the emergency situation where it comes to public safety, police and fire. I can see it at $20,000. I do have a question for the city attorney. Is there, with this $20,000 we have right now, say something comes along that says, hey, we can sell this case for $10,000, that's out being litigated, and could that city manager, with that $20,000 authorization, take and spend that $10,000 within that $20,000 limit, or would that have to go to council?
If it is truly just an expenditure of under $20,000, it could theoretically be accomplished within the city manager's spending authority.
Right. And that's something I would not want to see, especially when it comes from litigation. That should be a decision by the city council. I think that where we're getting at is, we've almost got to, and I don't think it'd be that hard, that we could actually put the fundamentals in place on what can and can't be spent, and how much. Now, going back to the mayor's situation with the $20,000, I don't have a problem with that with this council, but somebody might have a problem with that with a different council, so you'll have to be careful on that also.
Thank you. Did you, Alderman-Faber? Did you have a question?
I have, well, just a comment. I, too, was thinking about the $20,000. I think, in my mind, I was like, you know, do you limit it to $20,000 in between meetings? That way, at least you get kind of a reset to figure out. Instead of a $20,000 for any expense, have like a $20,000 allowance in between council meetings or whatever. That also is a limiting factor on how much is going to be going out. I agree that we should have this done before we go out for search, because our candidates are going to want to know, you know, what's the scope of their authority, and if they interview and decide they want to work here, and then we decide to pull back their spending authority, it may have an impact on their employment decision.
Alderman-Verbic?
And I like this discussion about within the mayor's purview, certainly looking back on historical check registers, you see a number of transactions for $17,000, $19,000, et cetera. I think if we just have a view of what are these things, not within the mayor's purview and an update, meeting to meeting, that that will flow much better with a better understanding of where resources are going.
Yeah, you know, whatever, as your city mayor, what I would say to our new city manager is, hey, your limit is 10, your limit is 20, or whatever, whatever the number is. If you're pretty close to that, come to me. Let me know. Let, you know, I mean, that just is good managerial sense, is it not?
Yes.
So. And is that something, then, Dean, that we as a city council could do upfront, so that it would be very clear to any new city manager what his or her authority might be?
Yes. And that would be established through the purchasing manual. That's currently where the city manager's spending authority resides.
Okay.
To address a couple of the points that came up, so to Alderman-Jacobson's point on approval through the consent agenda, so when a, if an agreement is approved by the city manager now, the only approval through the consent agenda would be through the warrant list, which is essentially after the transaction has occurred. I think what you're talking about would be a process where we'd be bringing the actual agreements on the consent agenda and having those be approved at the outset before the services were rendered. Is that a fair understanding of?
No, I mean, my belief, obviously, we get our check registers now, but it's 100 pages of every operation the city does. I'd like to see what the city manager specifically is using their spending authority for. So I mean, the reality is, we're going to give them a limit, whatever that limit may be. I'd like those transactions specifically denoted, just saying, hey, this is what fell under that manager's authority that wasn't approved at a council meeting already, so that we're aware of it. I mean, obviously, the reality is, it will be after it's spent in most cases, but being that it's going to be a limited number anyway, it's more, rather than checking an individual purchase, it's checking the regular use of that spending authority to make sure it jives with what council is directing, is at least my thought.
Okay. And to Alderman-Fagan's point on litigation settlements, so as the council is establishing your policies, on one hand, we have things like someone receives 15 parking tickets and comes in and makes an offer to compromise their case and pay $700 instead of $900. And if every litigation-related settlement was something that had to be presented to council, that may be challenging operationally. On the other hand, we have worked over the past couple of years to be very careful. For example, in FY '17, we had litigation relating to the police department, and the ultimate settlement was only $7,500, but that was something.
That's where I was going at. That's, I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about actual litigation that we're involved in. And I appreciate that, because that's exactly that point where that came up from my mind. Thank you.
And I think your third point, Mayor, was on department head appointments.
Yes.
And so you have, your power is limited, but it's also very extreme. It is limited in the sense that the Illinois Municipal Code is very clear that the power to appoint and remove department heads rests with the city manager. And if, for example, the council passed an ordinance saying, no, we're going to appoint and remove department heads, that likely would be viewed as the kind of action that would constitute a change in form of governance that couldn't be done without a referendum. On the other hand, the council has the ability to establish the departments and divisions. The council has the ability to fund or not fund any department, division, or position. So you have, in that sense, a very coercive power to direct the city to be staffed and leadership to be formulated in whatever fashion you direct.
Alderman-Jacobson?
I think the hurdle for me, sitting up here, has been, at budget time, we throw out a number and say, we think it's going to cost us $150,000 for Position A, and we throw that budget number in. Then that position's gone out and hired, and we have no idea what the details of the contract are. We have no idea how much of that number was used, we have no idea if we're even getting a value. We threw out a place marker, like we do in budgeting across the board in all of our operations, and while most of those issues come back to us to approve that number after discussion, the staffing isn't. And I think that's part of the frustration. I mean, I guess my question then becomes, can the city council then have the power to effectively review all contracts of employees? Obviously, we wouldn't be doing the hiring or firing, it would be allocating the funds to make that position a reality prior to those contracts being executed.
There are a number of different ways to effectuate that, starting from, the council could specify narrower ranges, or could specify more provisions with regard to elements of employee compensation or benefits that you have concerns about. So you could approach pre-appointment positions from that perspective and establish a narrower range. The operational challenge that we would need to be cognizant of is, if, assume we have a position that the council has authorized, and it is budgeted for, and the city's negotiating with the person who the city wishes to hire for that position, the city council couldn't take action to approve of the compensation of that employee in executive session. So if the council is approving of the final number or the final contract, that would have to be an open session discussion, and so we would have to build that timeline into any recruitment process and make sure the recruits understood that that was, that public approval being listed on the agenda prior to their contract being finalized and accepted by the city was a part of their hiring process. So you could approach it either at the front end, or you could certainly approach it at the back end, and your restrictions would be relating to, again, the financial power of the council.
Alderman-Verbic?
Which I think is why we should get to saying something like salary commensurate with experience. Maybe we have even more specificity that we would like to add that is aligned with our goals, for example. But I think truly, for this position and every other position, unless, of course, collectively bargain, then salary commensurate with experience. Also, from a granular standpoint, bachelor's required, master's preferred. How do you all feel about that?
Well, I guess you're suggesting, then, that the salary commensurate on experience would not only be something that we could, that we would want addressed when we hire the city manager, but also when we look at department heads.
That's correct.
Any other comment on that? Alderman-Fanoukian?
Well, I thought we were talking about what the city manager's powers would be, not what the qualifications would be, and I want to make that very clear. But I think Mike and I are at opposite ends on this one, because I think the city manager should have a master's degree. I think that that's, and it doesn't have to be an MPA, Public Administration, I'd welcome somebody with an MBA if they were qualified in all of the other aspects. I just think a master's is important.
Any thought, one way or the other, on that?
Mayor, can I, one clarification?
Yeah, I knew you were going to interject something, Chris. Yeah, please.
Well, a couple of things, and I don't know, it might be just...
Can you get closer to the mic?
It might be just a question of semantics. Can you? Can you hear me better now?
Well, I still can't hear in the room, but...
All right, so it might be just a matter of semantics, but we don't do any employment contract with any department heads. The only employee of the city that has an employment contract is the city manager. All others are at will with an employment offer letter, so there is not a contract. So that's one difference. And through the compensation study that was done in 2015, the city approved pay ranges for all of those positions, which it is still the pleasure of the council to reevaluate. But we might have a very hard time with recruitment, because when you include in the job announcement that your pay is depending upon your experience, the candidate really does not know, and then he becomes the push and pull, will say, no, you are worth this, no, I'm worth that. But when we show a narrow range, which we already have, and we also do an internal equity, we are never going to hire somebody that makes a lot more than everybody that's already here, it's just a matter of internal equity. So I just wanted to provide you that couple of pieces of information, and our pay ranges, they are currently on our website.
I want to get back... I want to get back to the educational level. Are we restricting ourselves, and Chris, perhaps you can chime in on this also, by requiring a master's degree? And if I hear no comment on that, then I'm going to assume that everybody's comfortable with that. I am not. I like the bachelor's degree, master's preferred, but that's me. Yeah. Alderman Fanouk, yeah?
If I may, a lot of follow-up comment. I don't think we're limiting ourselves, but we're, we're setting a, a higher baseline to have a higher qualified candidate.
Yes, that's right.
And I think that's, I think that's something that we need to have-
Okay.
-in the operation of the government.
Do you recall last time, did we, did all of the candidates, the four finalists, five finalists, did they all have master's degrees?
It was required. It was an MPA required the last time.
Oh, it was required, okay, yes. Okay, yeah, Dave?
I mean, I guess my first question, in the practicality sense, is other than Alderman Fanouk, do any of us have master's degrees? I mean, we're tasked to be the legislative C-level suite of the city, and we don't have that level of experience. Again, I think there's going to be lots of candidates out there that would be, meet the qualifications otherwise. And being that we have that really big university right down the street from us that happens to have a master's, a public admin program, that's pretty highly ranked, from what I understand. Again, if, if you have the business experience, if you have the real-world experience, if you have whatever qualities that are out there that may be attractive to us and are willing to come in and pursue an education, if we, we require it, or if we think it's necessary, we are in a very unique position, that we are so close to a university that most communities don't have that benefit. And I think you will get a much broader swath of candidates that, again, either have that life experience and may not have the master's, and that's maybe holding them back some, or some that would be willing to pursue that master's or beyond in order to come here. And I, I just worry that we're limiting that pool down to candidates that would have otherwise been great choices by creating that master's required.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me, certainly, than Alderman Fanouk's view. Anybody, you, you feel comfortable, Mike, with the bachelor's required, master's preferred?
Yes.
So you, your sentiments would align themselves with what Alderman Jacobson just said?
Yes.
Alderman, favor?
I would be in the same agreement as well.
Okay. Alderman Fagan?
Yes.
Okay, agreed with Dave?
Yes.
You feel that way?
Yes.
You know?
Again, in remembering a former city manager who had a PhD, it was not in city planning by any means, it was in music something, and he had a PhD, he was a doctorate-level degree holder. It wasn't necessarily directly relevant to the city operations, but I, I feel he did a more than adequate job and has found other employment in that field since with his doctorate without being related, so.
Thank you. I think we got some consensus there. And Chris, is that the kind of parameter that you'd like to see as we go forward?
Yes, and those are the discussions that we are going to have with Heidi Voorhees-
Right.
-to, as she prepares the position profile, but I will obviously relate that information to her.
Okay. All right, we talked about residency. We, we're, we're pretty good on consensus. Spending limit, I think we're comfortable perhaps with, perhaps not yet a number, but the fact that it should be a joint effort, perhaps on the part of the mayor and the city manager. And on the appointment of department heads, I think Dean has given us the limits, if you will, by which we could get ourselves involved, even though we fully understand that in the city manager form of government, the city manager does, to do the hiring of the department heads. Alderman Fagan?
Now that we've come to somewhat of agreement with bachelor, with the master's preferred, I'd like to go back to our scope of range on salary for a city manager and not have it as close, because if you understand that with what we've just said here, that can bring that range, a broader range. And that's something that we ought to discuss, or talk about, or think about.
So one thing that we are preparing to present to council is research on the comparable communities, that we provide you with information of their ranges and how much the current incumbent is making wages, to provide you some information, to see where do you want the ranges to be.
Yeah, Alderman Verbi?
And let's be sure to include some comparables from communities south and west of here, along with the, we always take comparables from communities east of here, which more often than not, really aren't comparable. So if we could have a blend of various communities in the region, that would be helpful.
So the data that we usually use is the same that was done for the compensation study with Sikkich? So if there are, they use some criterias based on some evaluations that they've done, based on EAV, based on communities that have a fire department, based on income per COPTA, based on the population, the number of employees. But absolutely, if you would like to add any others, I would just say, to make sure we get it right, I would ask you to, please send me an email with the communities that you would like to be included on the research.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. We want to see what they're paying in Rochelle, what they're paying in Dixon, what they're paying in Rockford, what they're, you know, we compare ourselves, not that we shouldn't, but to compare ourselves solely with our friends to the east doesn't necessarily always make sense. I realize we're on the cusp, if you will, of where we sit. I, I found that out in talking with other mayors. We tend to be more into the metro west area, where we're talking to west suburban mayors. On the other hand, to not have a conversation with the mayors of some of the communities to the west of us is doing ourselves a disservice. Alderman Jacobson?
In fairness, going through that process of picking what those comparables were, when Sikkich did the study, they basically came up with a formalized point system of how close multiple categories, as Chris was saying, had an airport was a category, had their own local fire department, had their own local police department. They created a document that was fair, effectively, to try to rank cities that were, based on our data, comparable to us. And we selected those 16 and added NIU and Sycamore to that list that didn't qualify based on that chart as local comparables. Again, do I believe that any of them are in reality comparable to the Calm? Show me another 40,000-person municipality with a $28,000 average household income. They don't exist. I mean, we're, we're very unique. But for maybe one or two other towns in the state of that size, again, my worry then, and my continuing worry now, is Illinois is broken. All municipalities are paying way too much. And I appreciate to the point that we have to be somewhere in that range to be competitive. But I, I mean, I would like to see a really good faith effort made to recruit from out of state. I mean, the people, the employees in Indiana, the employees in Michigan, the employees in Wisconsin are making 60% of what our people are making in Illinois, and doing the job happily every day, and going to work every day happily. That's part of the problem when using just straight Illinois comparables, as far as I'm concerned.
Interesting.
Some of them are just outrageous. Again, their city manager's making half a million dollars a year in the state of Illinois. It's outrageous. As public servants, I don't know, again, if we're going to do that and change that list of criteria, I think we should formalize it, to be fair, when we're looking at other staff positions and we're looking at other need for comparables. If we're going to do that, I think we should make a good faith effort to make a fair list of what this council believes would be adequate comparables, whether they're in the state or in the region, or in the Midwest, or beyond, so that we can use that going forward as a relevant document when we're comparing all of our costs coming forward up in the budget discussion. I don't think we should do it just on a spot basis for the city manager.
Thank you, good points. Alderman Verbi?
We govern in Illinois, but how can we become un-Illinois?
Mayor, may I interject?
Yes, our endo, city manager Molly Talking.
So the, on the comparable communities, we use that list also for the finance advisory committee when we were looking at the five-year financial plan. And so all of that kind of matrix data that they use to determine those communities is listed in that plan. But the one change we did make for this year's five-year plan was, we added the town of Normal. That wasn't originally included in one of the university cities. It is much more, I think, like the city, where a similar size, a university community. So we can add the town of Normal to that list for the city managers, if you would like, and still use that kind of base comparables that you have for everything else, but add that town of Normal into your university cities. And we are excluding, you know, the ones that, like the Village of Glenview and Grayslake, which do have a very high city manager rate.
We're going to have the opportunity, are we not, to Chris, that once we pretty much crystallize our thinking from tonight, and I think we made pretty good progress in 35, 40 minutes, that we will have the opportunity to chat with Heidi Voorhees and her team from HR Gov to reiterate, if you will. I know you're going to put these points down in writing, should be very clear, but, you know, to Dave Jacobson's point about the fact that we ought to be reaching out with that wider net, if you will, to include places like southern Wisconsin, or, you know, eastern Iowa, or whatever, I think makes some sense. Alderman Fanouk, excuse me, is that, is that true?
Yes, it is true. But we are the, since the hybrid recruitment process, Heidi's company is not doing the comps.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So if you could send us the, the cities that you really would like to be included, because we are working right now, actually, our management analyst, Aaron, he's helping with this, with this project. So he's already working right now and making the phone calls to get the information, so-
Good.
Because we will need that when we post the announcement for the job. So we would like to have that done as soon as possible.
Good, thanks. Alderman Fanouk?
Well, you know, rather than just trying to turn cities at random, why don't we use the other cities where the Mid-American Conference schools and the Big Ten schools are located? I think those would be, some of those would be great comparables, like Muncie, for example, would be a great comparable. Maybe Ann Arbor wouldn't, but along those lines, I think that'd be, we can throw out the extreme high ones.
Mm-hmm. Good point. I think those are the kinds of specifics and the kind of input that Chris needs from us. And obviously, it was alluded to in university communities, comparable university communities. Okay, what else do we have? Is there anything other than some of the unknowns that David outlined that we should be discussing tonight? Alderman Verbi?
Just backing up to the residency, residency point. So length of contract, I don't know if that's typically three years, or whatever the case may be. But what is truly fair to the candidate, so is it, is it one year, is it six months? And should we consider, if it's possible, some type of probationary period? So six months, one year, you're working out, great. We hope that that's the case, but there's going to be those cases where maybe not. How do we address that?
Dean or Chris, do you have any thoughts? And Dave and Bill, you were involved in the last search, any thoughts on?
I just need one clarification, because back in April 9, when we start this process, the direction I received was residency within six months of employment. So I just need to make sure, and, and we haven't made any decisions, we didn't put that in stone yet, but I just want to make sure that we have, we are on the same page.
I think six months is a reasonable time, but we'll see. Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I'd like to see that gently, gently pushed further than that. With a six-month bag, we would prefer residency upon employment, with the understanding that it would be no more than six months. I mean, I'd like to see a move here immediately, to tell you the truth. Do I think we should require that? No, I realize there's hurdles in relocating, but as we saw with our former manager who moved out of state, when you're moving out of state, you're, you're there right away. I think we should gently nudge in that direction.
Good. I'd be very comfortable with residency as soon as possible, with, with final residency established no later than six months, or something that I'd affect. Are you comfortable with that, Tony? Does that make sense to you? How about Alderman Markort?
Yeah, six months is a good timeframe, especially if they're coming from out of state or anywhere around. Maybe that doesn't take six months to find an apartment, you know, here, but there are logistics depending on the person's family, you know, selling a house, as far as buying and going back and forth. You know, I know cases, you know, larger companies will, if you get a job or a transfer, you know, they'll pay to move you, but I don't necessarily think that we're talking about forking out, you know, $15,000 to move somebody. You know, I haven't heard that brought up. So I think the timeframe is certainly fine for six months.
What other thoughts do we have on that? Bill, are you comfortable, Alderman Fanouk, are you comfortable with that, as soon as possible, within six months?
Six months, yes. And, and to Mike's point about moving expenses, I think we have that set up already to a certain extent. I don't remember the numbers, but I think that is in place.
It was $5,000 that we offered last time.
Okay.
It was $5,000 for an out-of-state move.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Remaining about like that, up to $5,000? Alderman Fagan, do you have any thoughts, one way or the other?
Yeah, I think that, I was going to say, within a year, six months could be a little short time for somebody, especially if they've got kids in school.
And you have an open guest room at your place?
I've got quite a few rooms open right now, bear in fact.
I'm sure Dean will love for you to bring home, yeah, our new city manager.
All right. We've talked about residency, we've talked about education, we've talked about spending limit, we've talked about appointment of department heads, moving expenses. What else do we need to talk about this evening before we can more clearly define and crystallize in our own mind what it is that this city council wants and this community wants as a new city manager? Are there any other thoughts? Alderman Verbi?
If this is the time and place of severance, we've seen it nine months, we've seen it six months, what should severance be?
And Dean is not saying anything, so I take it that's totally within our purveyance, right?
Yes, and some, some of the topics that you're reaching are topics that I think we had anticipated, you receiving some feedback from our Gov HR consultants.
Okay.
But it's certainly, from a legal perspective, it's entirely within the council's discretion.
I wouldn't want to-
Yeah, Alderman Fagan?
I wouldn't want to see anything more than six months. You know, we had it nine months before.
I would say we had it a year before.
But I can't see anything more. As a matter of fact, we might want to clarify that, that's situations. Do we want to even shorten that to six months?
Any thoughts, one way or the other? Alderman Jacobson?
If I remember correctly, I think in the last round that we did this, we originally had a three-month severance that we were willing to offer. The argument at that point, obviously, the candidate came back with a year, and we negotiated down to nine, and then it went to six. Our original offer, I think, was three. And the discussion at the time, coming out of the recession, was, you know, it's really difficult to sell a house in this market, you're probably going to take a loss in this market. If you- If you were to move here and buy a house, you're gonna incur those expenses of purchasing a house, and if you were only here for a year, who knows if you'd be able to sell the house? The reality in the real estate market locally right now, in the single-family market, is there's no inventory. You're talking, you're listing houses on Friday and selling them on Monday and closing in 14 to 30 days. I think a lot of those fears that existed five years ago have alleviated themselves, certainly, and have, are no longer really relevant to that argument at this point. I mean, I would be, I would love to see a one-month salary. I realize that's probably not reality in the field at this point, but I think our offer of three was fair. I would like to see, again, something a little more legitimized. It frustrates me in seeing when the city council's hands are tied, whether it's any employee in the agreements we have to sign to effectively part ways with someone. The reality is, a firing is next to impossible in the municipal field unless they commit a felony in office, or while, while holding that position, it's next to impossible. I think we can better define how we can dole out those salaries, whether if it's a mutual resignation, again, offer lasts effectively, a mutual resignation is writing on the wall and the employee leaves because of it, whereas a straight council decision to get rid of, again, I don't think should be entitled to any severance. If you're fired for either negligence or because you don't meet the qualifications of the position, I don't think you should be entitled to any severance. That's not how the real world works for most of us. If you don't do your job and you get fired, you get nothing but your pink slip and a nice escort to the door. So I truly believe that the issues that caused us to go to six last time are gone, and that three would be my high-end limit for me, but I would certainly be willing to discuss it.
What do we feel on three months? I'm very comfortable with three months.
Yeah, same.
Same here.
Tony?
I was just gonna, you know, so my only thought was, again, if you had purchased a home, it might be difficult to sell it in that three-month timeframe, but I don't know. I'm, I would agree with three.
Okay.
I could see six, but three, I would certainly be a supporter of.
I'm impressed with you all tonight. We've really made some headway into-
It's the heat.
More clearly defined.
It's motivating us in the work.
What was that, David?
It's the heat.
It's the heat. No, I, again, commend the input that you provided. Are there any other points that we need to discuss tonight? So the lay of the land is this, Chris, from what I understand. You will glean what the conversation we had tonight, the direction that you've been provided tonight. That will give you and Gov HR a clearer picture of your marching orders, if you will, and then you would be in a position over the next couple of weeks to tell us what the next procedural steps are as it relates to us meeting with Gov HR, meeting with HR, and determining what the process going forward will be.
Sure. So you will see a resolution to be approved on the consent agenda today, and upon that, I will make the phone call to Gov HR USA and start the process. I just want to also get some direction. If I understood correctly from our last meeting, you would like that meeting to be 101, the meetings with the council and the consultant, but also be a public meeting to talk about the job profile. Am I correct?
101 is in joint. Is that, is that something that we're comfortable with? Okay, good.
So you want both ways?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and then at that point, then you receive some more instructions of what the steps are. But the next step really will be for Heidi to meet individually with each one of you, and then we have a public meeting to talk about that. She will put together the position profile, and she will bring to council for final approval before it's sent out to candidates.
Sounds like a plan. Dean, anything else? Hearing nothing else, I would thank everybody for your input, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We are adjourned. We will reconvene as city council at 6:05. 6:05, thank you.
Let's say we start a little fire now.
Yeah, yeah.
What, do you want me to give you those lists of towns?